It's just a huge production.
Good evening, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council meeting Thursday, February 28th. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen.
Here.
Mr. Harper.
Here.
Mr. Miss Kimmern.
Here.
Mayor Abu Osley.
Here.
Ms. Spencer.
Here.
Mr. Brandt.
Here.
Mr. Sternad.
Here.
Thank you. It's time we have a moment of silence. Thank you. We have two proclamations this evening, and I will come down for it. First is for Black History Month, and Mr. Doolan is here with the NAACP to accept it. So please come forward. Welcome. Whereas during Black History Month, we recognize and celebrate the many important achievements and contributions made by African Americans to our nation's economic, cultural, and political development. And whereas Black History Month grew out of the establishment of Negro History Week in 1926 by Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of African American Life and History. And whereas the observance of Black History Month is an opportunity for Marion residents to reflect on the value that all people add to our diverse community and the need to continue our efforts to stand up to racism and work actively to build a truly equitable and just society for all people. And whereas the city of Marion strives to be a welcoming and inclusive community in which all residents are valued and given opportunities to belong, achieve their goals, and make positive contributions. And whereas the city of Marion is proud to honor the history and contributions of African Americans in our city and throughout our state and nation. And whereas the 2024 national theme for the observance of Black History Month is African Americans and the arts and honors the many impacts African Americans have had on music, visual arts, cultural movements, and more. Now therefore, in recognition of the rich history of African Americans and the contributions of African Americans, past, present, and future, I Nicholas Abu Osley, Mayor of the city of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim February 2024 as Black History Month in the city of Marion and encourage all residents to celebrate diversity as an asset to Marion. Seek out educational opportunities on the history and contributions of African Americans and join our city's efforts to promote progress toward a society that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all.
Yes, my name is Aaron Doolan. And I'm standing in for my brother, who is the president of the NAACP here. And he's currently on the board, the National Board. And I was born and raised in Cedar Rapids. I'm a little older than I look, you know. So I just want to thank you for this because I go far enough back that I can remember, like Marion was like, you know, what they call sundowntowns. Do not be over here when it got dark for black people. So we have, we have come a long way, and I'm glad to see that. And I hope that we can begin to come even closer because we all are family. And I'm going to thank you for this once again. And the reason I can say that we all are family is because there's really nobody that's born in the United States since 1940 that ain't mixed with something. You know, are they immigrants or whatever? But I always tell everybody that here in this area is where you get the best education you can. Because I found that out when I went to college. I don't know about you, but when I got to college, I was like, dang, we already did this. Yeah. So let us continue. I'm kind of disappointed in some of the things that are going on. We're abandoning certain books. And that we need to stand up against that because those books are educational. And what it has to do with slavery or the Holocaust, those things happen. And there are actually, it's not just black history, it's American history. So I appreciate that. And you guys have a good day. I see you put me at the top because I thought I was going to be able to stay and y'all was going to feed me and all that. Now, God bless.
Our other proclamation this evening is for Love Your Library Month. And we have our library director here to accept that. Whereas libraries connect people, resources, and culture to build and sustain a diverse, knowledgeable, and vibrant community. And whereas in a world undergoing constant change, libraries provide connections to the past and future of our communities, nations, and civilizations. And whereas the expansion of electronic networks links libraries together and makes their resources more easily accessible for library users around the world. And whereas libraries provide equal access to important resources for all people, including resources relating to technology, health, economics, housing, the environment, and countless other areas to support better living conditions and to help people lead longer, more productive, and fulfilling lives. And whereas the Marion Public Library offers story times, teen programming, and summer reading programs to encourage children to build habits of lifelong reading and learning that will benefit their personal and professional lives. And whereas the Marion Public Library offers basic literacy programs, computers, and technology, job searching capabilities, and other resources to increase opportunities for community residents and support businesses and economic development. And whereas the Marion Public Library engages Marion residents of all ages with services, spaces, and resources to enrich their lives and the life of our community. And whereas the Marion Public Library creates a welcoming environment for everyone to celebrate the joy of literacy, learning, creating, communicating, and cultural exchange, and is a place where community happens. Now therefore, I Nicholas Abu Osley, Mayor of the city of Marion, do hereby proclaim February 2024 as Love Your Library Month and encourage all residents to visit our library and thank the library and for their commitment to the success of this unique and wonderful institution.
Well, on behalf of the Library Board of Trustees, the staff, and volunteers of the Marion Public Library, I'd like to thank the mayor and city council for this recognition. Thank you for your leadership and support of our state-of-the-art new library facility and encourage all of our residents to come visit us, especially if you have not yet come visit us to see everything that we offer. So, thank you.
Okay, the next item is... Next item is a public forum, which is a time set aside for comments from members of the public on topics listed on the agenda but not associated with the public hearing. Is there anyone to address council? Please come forward. Please state your name and address, and you may hand the card to the...
Bradley J. Steenhook, 230 50th Avenue, Southwest, Cedar Rapids, Iowa, 52404. I'm the president of Save Our Sewers Incorporated. And I have my little slip up.
The clerk over here, thank you.
I'm here in regards to engineering items. E is an Edward point five and E as an Edward point six. So in regards to the Indian Creek Segment 11, what's on the agenda to possibly be awarded as alternate one? I'm a sewer professional. I've been in the business since 2002. Raised here in Lynn County, had my business in Lynn County. And there's a couple different options that were bid back in January. And I just suggest that maybe the council take a little bit more time to understand the difference between the base material and the alternate material. And the base material is currently high-density polyethylene lined concrete pipe, which is being used on a daily basis out here on Segment 7 of Indian Creek. It's a little bit larger version compared to what was bid on Segment 11. And where this lies, my aunt and some family used to live as a kid on Brentwood Drive.
Sir.
And I know how wet Dry Creek can get.
Sir, I don't mean to interrupt you, but this, this is, there is a public hearing on that topic. So you'll have the opportunity during that time to speak on it.
Okay. They told me I had to speak before, so...
Oh, okay. I'll ask the staff for guidance on that.
Yes, so the beginning part, whoever directed you to speak at the beginning probably didn't realize that you were here to speak on a public hearing topic.
Okay.
So the first part is for matters that are on the agenda but are not associated with a public hearing.
So, yep, when we get to the public hearing, you're welcome to come up and...
Okay.
Address that.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Your Honor, that, that item is E5 on page seven.
Right. Okay. Anyone else to address council on any topic that is on the agenda but not part of the public hearing? Okay. If not, we will close that, this part of the meeting and move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda, and this will include items A1 through G1 and resolution numbers 31765 through 31786.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through G1, Resolutions 31765 through 31786. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. For the next section, I will turn over the meeting to the mayor pro tem.
Yes, Your Honor, I move to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Osley's abstention. This includes items E1 through E2, Resolutions 31787, 31788.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Osley's abstention as follows, E1 and E2, Resolutions 31787 to 31788. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carried. There.
Next item is a public hearing regarding the naming of the Caboose Linear Park as Draper Park. We have a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and council. As you stated, this is for a public hearing regarding the naming of the Caboose Linear Park as to Draper Park. As part of the Central Plaza project, there was a need to relocate the caboose to the Linear Park located off of 31st Street, just south of the American Legion. Through the design process, the steering committee provided a recommendation of naming the park Draper Park after the late council member Paul Draper, who was an advocate for the community, for the community for preserving Marion's history, specifically the railway. Paul was a driving force in saving the depot in City Square Park along with the other railway items. And the committee and park board both have strong recommendations in support of this proposal, and then comes with the blessing of the Draper family also.
Thank you. Okay. The public hearing is now open. If there's anyone here to address the council, either in favor or in opposition to this measure, please come forward. Okay, we'll ask the staff if they've received comments outside the meeting.
We have not.
No comments have been received for the clerk's office.
Thank you. All right, we'll close the public hearing and proceed to the resolution.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 31789, approving the naming of the Caboose Linear Park property to Draper Park.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 31789, approving the naming of the Caboose Linear Park property to Draper Park. Discussion? Questions for staff? All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 31789, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved. Next item is a public hearing regarding the 2024 10th Avenue resurfacing project. We have a presentation.
Yes, Your Honor, so as you recall, last year, we did the south side or the eastbound lanes of Business 151 from essentially Hy-Vee to Walmart. So this is doing the other lanes. So we did put this out to bid. We got our one bidder from L. L. Telling. $1,682,136.80, which was 97.1% of the engineer's estimate. They have a basically an early and late start where they have to start between May 28th and 7/29/24. They have 55 days to complete the project and $1,000 per day in liquidated damages. This is an overall, again, showing the limits of the project. So similar to last year, we'll have to stage it. So we do one side, one lane, and mill it, put the base down, mill, put the base down, flip back and forth. We'll work with fire and police and everyone to make sure that everybody still has access as much as they can during the project, but it's a pretty quick project. So we are recommending approving the project and the bids.
Okay, thank you. If anyone's here to address the council, either in favor or in opposition of this measure, please come forward. Public hearing is now open. Okay, again, we'll ask the staff if any comments have been received outside the meeting.
We have not.
Okay, note that for the record, and we will close the public hearing. For the motion, I will turn over the meeting to the mayor pro tem.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve the project calendar regarding the 2024 10th Avenue resurfacing project as follows, Resolutions 31790 through 31791.
Second.
So I moved and seconded to approve the project calendar regarding the 2024 10th Avenue resurfacing project, Resolutions 31790 to 31791. Any comments?
Yes, question? Yeah, Mike, didn't we, our work last year, didn't we discover, once we got into that, that there were some, I guess, some subsurface, either drainage or compaction issues that caused extra work to be done? And do we anticipate that in, in this segment of work?
Yeah, so based on some joint lines that we found out last year and widening that happened before we actually had, took possession of the road. We found that out last year. Jake has been more diligent at looking at that, and so it's been incorporated with this project plan.
Okay, good. All right, thanks.
Yeah, Mike, remind us, what is the longevity of this resurfacing? And is the longevity different because this has higher traffic compared to resurfacing, say, a normal residential street?
So I don't want to get too technical, but there's different asphalt or binders that are used depending on the classification of the road. So in this case, we're using the highest binder that's available without getting into special binders. And so our typical asphalt overlay is 20 years. For this, instead of just going down a small amount, we went all the way to the pavement, the concrete that was underneath last time, and we're also putting drain tile to help that. And then there's a lot of point and fold-up pairs that we're doing to help at the joints where we know we have all the frost heaves to actually get down there and fix that. Is it forever? No, and eventually we'll have to reconstruct it. But this will obviously get us by for at least 20 years, but hopefully it's longer than that.
Okay, thanks.
Any more discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the 2024 10th Avenue resurfacing project, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries with one abstention. Turn it back to the mayor.
Next item is a public hearing on the 2024 Highway 100 East Post Road Traffic Signals and Turn Lanes Project.
Yeah, so this is an anticipated project that we have at this intersection. This adds additional turn lanes. So westbound, we'll have another turn lane. We'll have a westbound, northbound turn lane. And it will also have, if you notice, if you're going westbound, we have the hill. And so if people are stopped and stoplight, you can't necessarily tell they're stopped. And you pop over the hill, we've had a lot of rear-end accidents. And that's actually why we're getting half a million dollars from the TCIP program, Traffic Safety Improvement Program from the state. And so what we have is, what you're seeing on the right side is, if people are queued in that area and we have a special zone in there, this light will be on the other side of that hill. So this will be flashing to let people know, not only is there a red light, but there's people queued in that zone. So slow down before you pop over the hill and hit someone. This project was put out to bid. We did receive several bids on it. It was 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 bids on this project. The low bid did come in from Boomerang at $1,617,333, which was 88.1% of the engineer's estimate. 80 working days with a late start date of 6:17 and 24 and liquidated damages of $1,000 per day.
Okay, the public hearing is now open. Anyone is here to address the council, either in favor or in opposition to this measure, please come forward. Okay, we'll ask the staff if any comments have been received outside the meeting.
No comments have been received.
The clerk's office has not received any comments either.
Okay, please note that for the record. We'll close the public hearing, proceed to the motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the project calendar regarding the 2024 Highway 100 and East Post Road Traffic Signals and Turn Lanes Project as follows, Resolutions 31792 through 31793.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the 2024 Highway 100 East Post Road Traffic Signals and Turn Lanes Project, including Resolutions 31792 through 31793. Discussion? Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, Mike, one question. On the, if you're heading west, the left turn lane to go on East Post Road, is that turn lane being extended? You talked about the light, the signal on the right-hand side, but is the traffic, is that lane being extended further back?
We're actually adding a second turn lane, so I don't know that it's being... You can kind of see the green, that's the pavement that's being adjusted in there. So I don't know that we're changing it too much, but I believe we're adding another lane, and that's why we're shifting it to the north.
Adding a lane, okay. Yeah, I agree. I mean, you come over that hill, that lane is backed up outside of that turn lane quite often at rush hour, so that is a dangerous time, so I'm glad to see some improvement there.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor of approving the project calendar regarding the 2024 Highway 100 East Post Road Traffic Signals and Turn Lanes Project, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. The motion is approved. The next item is a public hearing regarding the Indian Creek Trunk Sewer Segment 11 Improvements Project. We have the presentation.
Yeah, so the location of this project starts basically in Donnelly Park, and then it goes behind the Scogman Development on the north side of Dry Creek and then ties in at our west limits. The old sewer actually was more into the trees, I get the mouse, more into the trees and closer to the creek. In this case, we're actually moving the sewer farther to the north, more in the prairie area. We actually just burned it not too long ago. And that way, we can leave as many of the trees there. So we had our arborists go out and locate what trees were identified as more important. This is the joint project between Cedar Rapids, Hiawatha, Robbins, and the city. It is installing, not quite as big a pipe, but we're installing 48-inch pipe in this project, or most of it. We did put this out to bid. The low bid came in from Boomerang at $5,669,416.83. It was 84% of the engineer's estimate. There is quite a bit of difference between Boomerang and the next bidder. The detailed bid tab is in your packet. You can see Boomerang was less expensive on almost all items. They are the ones that are currently doing Segment 7 for us, so they're familiar with the type of project. It's slightly smaller pipe. It's not as big of a project. That's a $13 million project. We have sections that are 40 foot deep up there versus this isn't quite as deep. The start date is the notice to proceed, completion date of 6/1 of 25, and liquidated damages an amount of $500 per day. For this project, there are some alternates that are in the bid package. So alternate number one, again, trying not to get too engineer-y on you, but the base bid will call a Chevy. The alternate one is a Ford. They're both vehicles. They both get us where we want to get to. One is slightly cheaper than the other. We can go through some of the pros and cons of each. We are recommending that we go with alternate one because it is a less expensive bid. And then alternate two is rock excavation. So we're not 40 foot deep and 20 foot is rock like we did in Segment 7, but we are going through some bedrock here. Most of the pipe is at least embedded in bedrock. Some of it at the top of the pipe. Most of the pipe is at least embedded in bedrock, some of it, the top of the pipe is that bedrock. So Boomerang does have equipment that has an excavator, and on the end of it, it has basically some diamond tip bits that kind of can pulverize that. But just like we found out on segment seven, sometimes they can't get through it. So alternate two is to allow for blasting. And there you can see, it's kind of strange, some of them are cheaper, some of it is more expensive to use explosives, and some of it is no change to use explosives. But in this case, several of us have seen the videos of what's happened, or we were there and saw the explosions and see no reason why not to allow that if they run into the case where they would rather use the explosive versus manual tools. So we are recommending both alternate one and alternate two. I know we have someone here at least that wants to talk about the pipe, and so when I come back up here, we can go through pros and cons of concrete line pipe versus Hobos.
Okay, thanks for the presentation. At this time, the public hearing is open. Anyone here to address counsel, either in favor or in opposition to this measure, please come forward. Sir, you will come back up. Thanks for your patience.
Thank you, sorry about that. So I am for it both directions. I just want the council to understand the difference between a rigid pipe and a flexible pipe. As the engineer stated, it is going to be in a rock trench, and there's two very active springs, you know, where the city of Marion used to pull their water supply from. And when you mix a flexible fiberglass pipe, both are made from fiberglass and in a rock trench, it's going to be kind of hard to lay a pipe that's made of a lightweight material that tends to float or is somewhat buoyant. And so there are some hidden costs, you know, right now. Alternate one is approximately $70,000, you know, lower cost. There's a cost of ownership to the taxpayers of all Cedar Rapids, Marion, Hiawatha, and Robbins. And I'm in the sewer rehabilitation industry. And if you guys don't take into consideration what this is going to cost you over the duration in terms of your life cycle cost of owning this 48-inch diameter pipe with the situation, what we have here with rock and water, concrete tends to act as ballast, you know, to make things sink and stay where they need to be be home for the duration of the pipe. Where sometimes the lightweight products, especially in a rock trench envelope like this, you might have a situation of the pipe either deflecting or even potentially floating. And we brought up the ballast question with the manholes at the pre-construction or the pre-bid meeting, you know, because we know what we're dealing with here with the wetlands and and the active springs that fill this area. And as a child, I grew up and I played in Dry Creek, and I know what that thing can turn into with some family that lived off Brentwood Road. And so there is a, there is a very, you know, they're not the same product, one's rigid, one's flexible. The best thing, what I would recommend is you go out and you maybe look at the lower segment with the 60-inch diameter pipe, understand what that pipe does in terms of a wet basin compared to the, you know, the alternative product that's the low bid. And my suggestion is you guys do a little bit more research into what the two pipe types do, and maybe table this and then put it on a different agenda at a later date to vote on once you guys understand the difference of the pipe material types and what one does and what one doesn't. He mentioned they're similar, they are. They're similar in diameter, and that's about the only similarity. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
One's designed to float, one's designed to sink.
Questions? For the gentleman? Sir? Sir, we have a question. Oh, yes, but this is a comment period, so please go ahead.
Yeah, just so to summarize, so that we are all clear, your recommendation is for us to consider which pipe type?
The high-density polyethylene lined concrete pipe, the base bid, not the alternate.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure.
They're both good products, okay? They convey sewage well. Some pipe like wet environment, some pipe do not. This is a very, very wet environment. You have wetlands, you have active springs. Do you want something that's going to naturally sink to the bottom of the trench on its own based off the weight of the product? Or do you want something that's going to be kind of a bear to install? And plus, they have to add ballast, which is weight to keep it down from wanting to potentially, you know, come up out of the ground. And so the pipe that was the base bid, the roles were reversed on the segment that's currently going in. And you guys actually spent more money to award the high-density polyethylene lined concrete pipe, what's currently being installed in 60-inch diameter. This for $67,000 to save money. The cost of ownership, and I know Alvernet Road is going to be expanded through here, and with some of these fiberglass-style manholes, I don't know when you guys come to install a bridge or change the abutment or adjust these new structures that are going to be new on this Boomerang contract. What is that cost going to be to the taxpayers when you guys start re-aligning Alvernet Road, whether it comes into 8th Avenue or 2nd Street? So there are some hidden costs that potentially are going to come up with using a product that's not widely available, and it comes out of Texas. When you, if you guys install the pre-cast line product, you can get manhole sections that are already available by six vendors within 100-mile radius of Marion, Iowa. And so there is going to be some long-term issues, which I see, because that's the industry I come from, is rehabilitation. And there's some things to think about. $67,000 is not that much of a cost savings on a project of this magnitude when you want this to last over 100 years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to address counsel? Please come forward. If you filled out the card, please go ahead, okay, and then state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Bijon Camenian, I'm a division manager with Hobos Pipe, alternate one. I'm not going to educate and lecture everybody on civil engineering. I think this previous speaker is challenging the Winsturgon Kim, which is a very reputable consulting firm. They've looked at all this, we've looked at all the wet grounds and everything else that was mentioned, the pipe is designed for it. So I don't want to waste everybody's time here. The $67,000 is not just the savings today. This pipe will last 150 years. We actually have test data that this pipe will last 150 years. I don't believe my colleague over here will produce anything that says or guarantees the pipe, that their pipe is going to last over 50 years. So without going to too much detail, we have pipe installed all over the United States, Canada, all the way out to Alaska and Hawaii with this pipe. And it works everywhere. There's no reason that it won't work here. The pipe that's put as base bid doesn't actually have the pressure rating that our pipe does. We can give you a 25 PSI internal, 150 PSI external. You're going to see zero leakage in this pipe. And that's, that's what you're looking at. And the actual savings is going to be 150 years from now. Somebody's going to open that manhole and they said the pipe is still there. And they're going to compliment you guys here today, 2024, for putting it in the ground. That's all I have to say. I don't want to go into too much civil engineering, I think it's out of the scope of this particular here. I appreciate your time.
Anyone else here to address counsel, please come forward. Have you filled out the card, sir? If you wouldn't mind doing that afterwards, and then please state your name and address.
My name is John Satoff, I live in Marion. I'm a homeowner in Marion, I've owned several properties in Marion. I think Brad done an excellent job of explaining what his does. Longevity is very important in these projects because we're all taxpayers, we all want things to last as long as they can. Anytime anything has to be redone, and everybody's got the best product, 150 years is a long time. It's like play tile. The tile they put in several years ago, and then they had the tile that collapsed, Orangeburg, now they're using Schedule 40. Everybody's always got the best product, but no, there's very few products that are good for 150 years. We're all taxpayers, we want everything for longevity, for our future. But I think Brad done a good job of explaining, I think you need a table list, think about it a little longer, get a little more information, and find out what product is the best. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else to address counsel on this measure? Please come forward. Okay, did we receive any comments outside the meeting?
We received a comment from Charlie Moses with American Concrete Products, who wrote in opposition of the alternate bid of fiberglass reinforced pipe being recommended. Their email was also sent to you prior to the meeting.
Mike?
That's it.
Okay. Okay, seeing that no one else is coming forward, we'll close the public hearing and proceed to the motion.
Mayor, I move to approve, excuse me, Mayor, move to approve project calendar regarding the Indian Creek Trunk Sewer Segment 11 Improvements Project as follows. This will be resolutions 31794 through 31795.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the Indian Creek Trunk Sewer Segment 11 Improvements Projects, including resolutions 31794 and 31795. Discussion? Go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, Mike, first off, you know, suppressing your natural proclivity to go engineer on us. I was a little disappointed with that. Yeah, anyway, I do have some, I do have a couple of questions and a comment. I'll start with the comment first. I was able to witness a sequence of blasting out on the work that's out by Menards, and I was really surprised, from a, from a sound perspective, how uninvasive it really was. And it was, it was controlled, not a lot of debris. And so I just want to say, with that being something that may be likely here, I just viewed that as a very, very solid choice relative to saving time and effort on the total project. And if any of my colleagues would like to see the video that I took of that, I'll just redistribute that to y'all. That's the comment. So fundamentally, the pipe that we're intending to put in is a fiberglass matrix, is that correct?
Correct, so I'll just kind of go through it real quick, just so everybody's, I'll geek out a little bit for Mr. Harper. So the base bid that's in there is the same pipe that we're putting in segment seven. It's concrete pipe with reinforced baskets in it, and then it has that yellow liner on the inside of it to keep the the toxics from corroding into the concrete. So for an HDP line reinforced, basically you're getting two pipes in one, you're getting the concrete pipe for durability, and then you're getting the liner for corrosion protection. Obviously, there where we were 40 foot deep, that's very important so we don't crush the pipe. In this case, our deepest is 21.4 feet from our flow line to our man, top of the manhole or top of the grade. Our shallowest is 11.9. Our average is 14.7, and our median is 13.8 in our 14 large manholes that we're putting in here. The base bid has proprietary joints that snap together to prevent that infiltration. The HDPE line concrete pipe is marketed to last 75 years. They'll say that it'll last longer, but that's kind of what they market it as. And then, like I said, once you get into those deeper installations of 25-foot plus, the contractors prefer the more rigid pipe so that we don't crush it because of the weight of all the material above it. And then the, the concrete pipe only has corrosion protection on the inside, it doesn't have anything on the outside. Not that we have issues with materials there, but just comparing the two for you. Hobos is reinforced concrete, reinforced fiberglass. So it actually comes in 20-foot lengths, which reduces the number of joints, so every joint is a potential for infiltration. It's actually marketed as 150-year design life. It's resistant to chemical corrosion because not only, because it's the same material throughout. So not only does it have the corrosion prevention from the inside, it also has it from the outside. It does take careful bedding procedures to ensure the longevity of the pipe. And in this case, just like we're doing on the other project, the rock that the contractor is going to generate, they're going to grind up and use as that material. So they have it on site, they're going to use it. That's likely why their bid was so much different between the bid that was next in it. And then, an important thing is the gaskets, or where those joints are, are actually designed the same as pressure versus gravity. So gravity pipe just flows downhill versus pressure pipe is, if you need to pump that up a hill, Marion, we're lucky, we don't have any gravity, any force mains. You go to North Liberty, they have 20 force mains out there. We're all gravity-fed, we do have two private force mains in the city. But that gasket is rated to 150 PSI exterior, so water coming into it and protecting it from infiltration, and 250 PSI internal, so against leakage or that wastewater getting into our, our stream. So it's a much higher rated gasket, and there's less of them than there is in HDPE. So bottom line is, they're both acceptable materials for the trunk sewer. They're both going to give us corrosion-resistant sewer line. They both have infiltration and longevity. They're both going to say they're better than the other, like I said, Ford versus Chevy, they both have their good and bad. Hobos actually has a larger footprint in the amount of pipe that is installed in the United States, and either pipe is suitable for this project.
Well, you certainly anticipated the questions I had about corrosion resistance, as well as just any structural uniqueness between the two, so I appreciate that, thanks.
Go ahead, Councilmember Jensen.
So one of the other aspects the gentleman talked about with the fiberglass versus the concrete is the buoyancy issue. So can you talk about why that is, how that is going to be different, if that really, in your opinion, is a concern?
Yeah, so anytime you use, let's just not even say fiberglass, but a lighter pipe, whether it's PVC, anything like that, that's naturally a lighter pipe versus concrete, it's just, it's heavy, so it's not going to have that buoyancy issue. There are two locations that we're actually going underneath the creek. One of them is actually ductile iron pipe, which is neither of them, they have to put ductile iron in. And the issue there is we're matching into the existing flow line of the existing sewer, and we're getting underneath the creek, and we actually have to go with a smaller pipe in that section because otherwise it would stick into the creek, because we don't have, we can't, we have to match flow lines. So in that case, it's ductile iron, it's heavy, it's not going anywhere. The other location where we're going underneath the creek, it's actually being encased with concrete, and that's our DNR requirement, because we don't want to, so you have that silt that would sit at the bottom of your creek, and if you have a high-water event, you're going to have a higher velocity, and that's going to pull that away, and it could expose the pipe, so that's why the pipe is actually encased.
So are those the only two locations where, where you consider buoyancy to be a concern?
The rest of it, it's going to be encased in rock. Again, a lot of it, the bed of it is actually in rock that they're going to have to excavate and then put that rock on top of the material to hold it down.
Okay, so since this is a, a project involving all four communities, can you kind of tell us how this decision was made to select this alternate? I mean, is this your department's decision, or were Cedar Rapids and the other cities involved in that decision as well?
So they were all involved, along with our engineers, so we got an, we asked V and K what their opinion was between the two. We asked Cedar Rapids to concur, Robbins to concur, and Hiawatha to concur. I think we only pay about 4 and change percent of this project, just because most of it serves the other municipalities. It sits within our municipality, so they all had to have input in it, just like they did for segment seven.
So there's full concurrence from all four communities for this recommendation?
Correct.
All right.
Any other questions, Councilmember Brandt?
Got answered.
Answered, okay. Anyone else? Any other discussion?
No.
Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor of approving the project calendar for the Indian Creek Trunk Sewer Segment 11 Improvements Project, including resolution 31794, 31795. Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Okay, the motion is approved, the next Okay, the motion is approved. Next time it was a public hearing regarding an amendment to remove Article 12, flood hazard areas of the, of chapter three forty of the Marion Code of Ordinances. We have Mr. Hockett here for a presentation.
Brief one. Yes, this is a public hearing regarding a request to amend portions of the zoning ordinance. Really, it's just to remove Article 12 and from the zoning ordinance as it already exists within chapter one sixty three of the flood damage protection area that was adopted. It was created separately with the recodification process. So we already have it. We have it word for word duplicated in two text, two sections of the code. This is the timing of recodification that we kept them in there. And this is just part of the, the corrections we knew we'd have to do. We are asking for a waiver or a suspended rules and approve the second and third, or second and final considerations of the ordinance only because it's word for word duplicated within the code.
Okay, thank you. This time the public hearing is open. Anyone here is, is here to address counsel, either in favor or in opposition to this measure, please come forward. Most of staff have received any comments outside the meeting?
I have not.
City Clerk's office has not.
Okay, please note that for the record. Seeing that no one is coming forward, we will close the public hearing and proceed with the motion for the ordinance.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty four day zero two, approving an amendment to re, to remove Article 12, flood hazard areas of chapter three forty of the Marion Code of Ordinances. And this is the initial consideration.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the initial consideration of ordinance number twenty four dash zero two, approving the amendment to remove Article 12, flood hazard areas of chapter three forty of the Marion Code of Ordinances. Discussion? All those in favor of the initial consideration of ordinance number twenty four dash zero two, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to suspend the rules and proceed to the second consideration of ordinance number twenty four dash zero two.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules and proceed to the second consideration of ordinance number twenty four dash zero two. Discussion on the motion to suspend the rules.
Yes, Your Honor, just a question for Dave. So the, the reason why this is appropriate is because all we are really doing is deduplicating
That is correct.
our documentation.
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion or questions on the motion to suspend the rules? All those in favor of suspending the rules to proceed to the second consideration of ordinance number twenty four dash zero two, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty four dash oh two, approving an amendment to remove Article 12 flood hazard areas of chapter three forty of the Marion Code of Ordinances. And this is the second consideration.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the second consideration of ordinance number twenty four dash zero two, approving an amendment to remove Article 12, flood hazard areas of chapter three forty of the Marion Code of Ordinances. Discussion? All those in favor of the second consideration of ordinance number twenty four dash zero two, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to suspend the rules and proceed to the final consideration of ordinance number twenty four dash zero two.
Second. It's been moved, it's been moved in second to suspend the rules and proceed to the final consideration of ordinance number twenty four dash zero two, discussion on the motion to suspend the rules. All those in favor of suspending the rules and proceeding to the second, to the final consideration for ordinance number twenty four dash zero two, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Councilmember Brandt?
Apologize. The reading head. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty four dash zero two, approving an amendment to remove Article 12, flood hazard areas of chapter three forty of the Marion Code of Ordinances, final consideration.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve the final consideration of ordinance number twenty four dash zero two, approving the amendment to remove Article 12 flood hazard areas of chapter three forty in the Marion Code of Ordinances. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the final consideration of ordinance number twenty four dash zero two, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. For the next, for the remainder of this section, I will turn over the meeting to the mayor pro tem.
Thank you, Your Honor. With that, we will open a public hearing regarding a request to rezon property from U one Uptown one to PUD Planned Unit Development for property located at one two seven seven Eighth Avenue, Marion, Iowa, twelve seventy seven Eighth Avenue LLC. Do we have a presentation?
Yes, I have a brief one here. As you say, this is a public hearing regarding the rezoning of the former Methodist Church property. I think everybody's very familiar with the site. This is a rezoning from U one, which is Uptown one. It's the predominant uptown district around the park to PUD Planned Unit Development. And this will be used to support a fifty five unit residential rehab redevelopment of the site within the existing envelope of both the historic church portion as well as the classroom section. This went to the planning zoning commission last month and it was approved six to zero. Few items regarding the, the, the request. This is land use designated for uptown commercial zoning, which allows for a variety of residential or mixed use and commercial uses or underlying zoning. The PUD is solely being requested as allows flexibility from some of the requirements of the U one. The U one zoning specifically prohibits ground for residential. So the redevelopment of the church as a full residential building would not be supported within the existing zoning. Thus, the request to rezone to PUD, it allows the flexibility to, I don't want to say do whatever they want, but it allows them flexibility from the traditional kind of restraints of the, of the code. So they come in here and they have to develop with the, the site, preliminary site and final site development plans, which will be at planning and zoning commission next week and that you'll see next month. So they're rezoning it. Really pending those items that are coming up and then they'll all come back together here at the end of March at the same time for one final approval. The underlying zoning, the PUD zoning is, is, again, it's not really changing the, it's not changing the envelope of the building. It's compatible with all the surrounding zoning districts on all sides. And again, the planning zoning commission found that it met the requirements of the comprehensive plan as well as the intent of the PUD ordinance.
Great, thank you. Do we have anybody present who would like to speak in favor of or against this request to rezon? Thank you. And yellow card.
I'm sorry, I'm the mayor pro tem, members of council. My name is Darrell High with High Properties, two eleven First Avenue, Cedar Rapids, Iowa. We do have the architect and the civil engineer here. I think you'll see all this site plan at, at the next council meeting, but we're here to answer any questions that you, you may have.
Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of or against the project? Come forward now. Staff, do we have any comments received?
We do not.
No comments have been reserved from the clerk's office.
Wonderful, thank you. With that, we will close the public hearing. Move on to F eight.
Mayor, move, Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve ordinance twenty four dash zero three, approving a request to rezone property from U one Uptown one to PUD Planned Unit Development for property located at twelve seventy seven Eighth Avenue, Marion, Iowa. This is the twelve seventy seven Eighth Avenue LLC, initial consideration.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number twenty four dash zero three, approving request to rezone property from U one Uptown one to PUD Planned Unit Development for property located at twelve seventy seven Eighth Avenue, Marion. Discussion? Did you have any discussions, Kelly?
Yeah, my comment, first of all, I think I appreciate the work that the Conlon Group and everybody associated with it has done to, to save the, this project. It's certainly a very historical site. And the city of Marion and the citizens I know are certainly in support of this project. There's one aspect about this project that I've brought up over the last year, and that is the parking issue related to this project. So my comment is that the city is providing long-term financing for this project. I would hope that we have a parking solution that is as long-term.
Any other discussion? All right, with motion and a second, we'll vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries with one abstention. That will move to a public hearing regarding a request for the partial demolition of property located at one two seven seven Eighth Avenue, Marion, Iowa. That public hearing is open. Is there any, do we have a presentation?
We're fine, yes. Again, same site. I think everybody's familiar with the former, former Methodist Church. This is a request for demolition. Any properties within historic district has to go through the demolition review process. It starts with the historic preservation commission. They make recommendation to the city council. This includes all structures in a historic district, whether it be a fairly modern garage or a hundred and twenty five year old home. So it covers everything because as we know, as time passes, things that are new today may become historic in the future. So it covers all structures. So this is a partial demolition. We've done a few of these in the past. The primary portions of demolition are really facade, they're not structure wise. We're going to see a complete removal of all the windows from the building, well, the stained glass and the classroom windows. Stained glass intends to be taken out, rehabbed, restored and probably modified and then put back in where they can be. They have to address the egress from these units. These are studios, one bedroom apartments, and this is the primary window. So they're going to do address the egress, emergency egress from those windows. So they'll be reconfigured some within the existing frame or existing opening of the window. The second major portion, we'll see some renderings here in a second of what that will look like, will be the removal of not all the brick, but a majority of the brick around the classroom wing on that east side. Removal the windows on that side as well. And that'll be reskinned with a metal product. And we'll have more of that detail through the plan development process when we actually see the site plan and the final, final renderings. But I'm going to go through the renderings that we have today so you get a sense of what is being removed. I know there's a lot to look at on this image. I tried to capture it all as one. The west elevation, the front of the church is going to remain unchanged. Unfortunately, I had a new slot I couldn't get in in time, but the proposed ramp is not going to be proposed any longer. And the garbage enclosure will be removed from that front as well. So the, the existing church will look very much like it does today, minus the sign and minus the, I think they have a second little entry on the ground level there to avoid the stairs. So that'll all be removed and the church will be, front will really be restored to as close as it can be to where, how it originally was. As we move to the north elevation, again, the historic portion of the church really does not change much. Where we see the majority of the change will be in the classroom wing. Again, all that brick comes off, they're proposing a metal siding, keep a lot of that brick intact. And that's really to accommodate all the balconies and new windows on that backside. And then as we look at the east end, this would be the thirteenth street side. That's where we're going to see the most change. That is the portico, the drop off awning that was associated with the church and the daycare when it was operating. That, that awning will be removed, will be replaced with a two-story glass entrance. Really, this is stairways in this area. And then the, a portion of the classroom wing will be removed. Again, that's a stairway today. They're just going to do a glass stairway entry there as well. So it's kind of blending some modern and, and historical or traditional styles there on the classroom wing. And then the alley side, again, it's mostly just the classroom wing that gets removed, the facade wise and redeveloped. Again, we'll have additional renderings next month after the planning and commission's final recommendation. But again, just kind of so you can see a sentence of scale of what is being removed from today versus what's proposed. Some additional renderings of that classroom wing. Again, everything that's kind of that orangish is the brick that they intend to keep. They might be able to use a lot of the brick that comes off to do some, that doing tech pointing or masonry repair. They'll be able to utilize some of that brick as well to keep it matching as close as possible to what's there today. Then just kind of a little bit more close up so you can see how the portico and awning are removing the glass feature as well as the stairway portion of the classroom is just going to be a glass feature as well. So again, historic preservation commission met on this month and a half ago, they recommended approval.
Thank you. Is there any one present who would like to come forward and speak in favor of or against this project? Now is the time.
My name's Kyle Martin. I'm with Martin Gardner Architecture and Uptown Marion, also two ninety nine Sixth Avenue's home address. One additional thing about the interior portion of the building, there's a lot of layers of history that have been renovated over the years. And so this partial demolition permit will also allow us to uncover some of those more modern things. So we can see some of the more, we can, we can get more into detail as far as what the final design will actually allow us to do, if that makes sense. So there's some nineties renovations of portions of the buildings inside the sanctuary that we don't know exactly structural configuration quite yet. So removing some of those layers will allow us to see more of that, so.
Thank you. And they have a conference. Great. All right. Anyone else here to speak in favor of or against the project? No one? Do we have, did we receive any comments?
I have not.
City Clerk's office has not either.
With that, we will close the public hearing and move on to the resolution. Resolution?
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve resolution number three one seven nine six, approving a request for the partial demolition of property located at twelve seventy seven Eighth Avenue, Marion, Iowa. This is at twelve seventy seven Eighth Avenue LLC.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number three one seven nine six, approving request for the partial demolition of property located at one two seven seven Eighth Avenue, Marion. Discussion?
This might be a question for Kyle and what Steve and I were just sidebar-ing on here a moment ago. Regarding the stained glass windows, understand those got to be removed. They're going to be refurbished. They're going to perhaps be retrofitted so that they can be utilized in the building. Are all of the stained glass windows going to be put in place or repurposed on the property?
So the, the vast majority right now, all but maybe one or two, they will go back into their original location. There's some where, again, because of the egress and the technology available in the new frames that they'll, that they'll be rebuilt in. A couple of them will, may need to be relocated within the building, but we're still working out the, that technicality with, with the stained glass consultant, so.
Okay, so they all end up being put back in service somewhere?
Yep. Okay. They definitely all will go somewhere. And like I said, out of the, however many there are, there's two that I think they may have to be displayed inside the building or something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions or discussion? All right. That will take a, will take a vote. All those in favor of resolution number three one seven nine six, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carried with one abstention. Now, turn it back to the minutes.
Okay, this brings us to a public forum, which is a time set aside for comments from members of the public. Just a reminder of the rules. They're stated on the screen. And we ask that you please limit your comments to five minutes and that you also complete a yellow card to allow for for the for the for the minutes and also to allow for follow-up that may be needed. Also, we ask that you not approach the dais, but turn any materials you want to submit to the council, please hand those to the clerk. Anyone here to address counsel, please come forward.
Hello, everybody. With all due respect, I'll be exercising my fourth amendment right under the United States Constitution. I'm here to talk to you guys about a letter that I got from Chief Kitzmiller of the Marion Iowa Police Department sitting right there. The date on this letter is December 8th, 2022. The date of the meeting is December 1st, 2022. And on December 27th, 2023, I had a conversation with Phil Fort, Lieutenant Phil Fort, and actually handed him this letter, trying to get to the bottom of what's really going on here. Number one, I talked about an officer being dishonest and being racist. On number two, I talked about more racism. Number three, I talked about racism too. On number four, it talked about license plates. And number five, the money they stole in a records request. Now, I didn't just talk about the racism. I brought in a television with an unredacted body camera straight from the Lynn County Attorney's Office. Like, it wasn't edited, and I literally showed Chief Kitzmiller, this is what your officers are doing on the street. And while I don't have time to talk about all these, I'm going to talk about number four in a little more detail due to time constraints. On December 1st, I told Mike Kitzmiller after the meeting that the narrative he gave me is just not true, you know? He basically brushed it off, and I reported two license plates of police violating the law. Months later, I filed a complaint about number 88, car 88. And it just shows that the narrative that Kitzmiller was putting on the table, it's either true or it's false. It's very simple, like, you know, these cops are either driving with expired tags or they're not. And the fact that he's lying about not just a couple of things, but every single thing in this letter, it makes you wonder, what is the motivation for the lies? Like, you're clearly trying to deceive me, and it shows that he's trying to cover up what the Marion Police Department does. Another thing that I'm going to be submitting to you guys today, this paper, it's a little more clear when it's on a screen. So this this photo is of Dan Veneville with two black eyes. He he is actually a fully disabled elderly man. And it's really sad to see somebody with two black eyes. And while Michael Kitzmiller did not throw the punch with his hand, it was a trespass right here in this city hall. It was malicious prosecution and bogus charges right here in this city hall, right from the Marion Iowa Police Department. And when Dan went to court to support his son against the bogus charges, Dan not only walked out of there with two black eyes from Lynn County Sheriff's Department, but he also did 12 days in jail with no warning, had no idea. You know, it was condemned and another bogus charge. And when he got out of jail, they just dropped the charges. So there's no conversation about why did he do 12 days in jail? Why does he have two black eyes? There's no conversation. And the violence, guys, you know, take a look at this picture, you know? It's just so horrible to see a young police officer in his twenties or thirties going after a fully disabled man, you know? It's almost like the type of, like, going after somebody in a wheelchair, you know? Like, that's just bad karma, you know? And it's just horrible that you guys are aware that this trespassing garbage and all the bogus charges, you know? You guys know about the violence. You know the way you destroy people's lives. And you have the ability to clean up this department. You have an ability to meet with me or somebody else and go over these body cams from Lynn County Attorney's Office. This has been going on for years, guys, and it's it's not going to stop, you know? News is going to start reporting on it over and over again. I've been over to lawsuits. You guys have seen them. You just really need to clean up the corruption in the Marion Iowa Police Department. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Anyone else here to address counsel, please come forward.
Thank you all for your time. Thank you for being active city council members and sincerely, you guys are doing you guys are doing the work for our town and our community. My name is Nash Randall Brown, and I speak for myself. I represent a nonprofit Legal Assistance with Public Learning Commitment. And before I start rambling, I'd like to just give a shout out to the Parks and Rec guy, Brett. I was just over at Star Park seeing what you guys did over there with the with that soccer enclosure. And I just thought that was really cool. So thank you for that. So I'm here and I'm speaking on a legal nonprofit, and it's it's a new one. And what brought me here and what brought me to devote my time and energy into this is had to do with a divorce, and it was a bad divorce. There was a magistrate involved named Kristen Lisa Deniger. She is part of our sixth district. And I had the unfortunate opportunity of meeting her at the in-laws' house in 2019. And then in 2020, I get divorced. In 2019, I was introduced to her by the mother-in-law. This is my longtime friend. And then they made a joke stating, better not screw up or we'll have your ass. Unfortunately, me and my wife did not be able to make amends, and we got a divorce. And that started two days after the Deray Show. And while she abandoned the property, me and my nine-year-old daughter were forced to leave our house. And I don't know if you guys remember the Deray Show, there wasn't many places to rent or to stay in. Without anywhere to go, I thought the only place to protect my daughter would be to take her back to our abandoned property. And upon our return, I got arrested. And I got arrested over and over again for trying to save my company, for trying to get personal belongings for my daughter and for myself. And every warrant was issued by this magistrate. To say she's mentally unfit is an understatement. And she's still sitting magistrate to this day. There's been complaints filed with the Civil Rights Commission Board, the Judicial Qualifications Commission Board, and nobody seems to care. So I want to kind of talk about preclusion, and preclusion is the action of preventing something from happening. The synonyms of preclusion is impediment and inhibitor, just to name a couple. So to prevent future incidents from happening with this mentally unstable magistrate. I believe that we need to take action. The proof is in the phone records for if anybody's interested, if any one of our city council members has subpoena power. US Cellular is where we can find the records and the connection between the mother-in-law and our sitting magistrate Kristen Deniger. To say the least, what I've lost is 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 a lot. I lost the relationship with my kids. I lost my company that I've owned and operated for seven years. I lost I lost my reputation. And I lost the last three years of my life. The only thing I could do was to leave Iowa to just get some control over this situation, and that's what I did. And then I was able to come back just recently in June. And of course, I get arrested, thrown in jail for three months, and now all these charges are getting dismissed and then overturned in our appellate court. So the motive is there. And that's what brings me here to speak with you guys. That's what brings me to be funding, founding this nonprofit. And you know, with everything taken away, you know, I lost a lot of self-worth, having my family and my kids and my company was my self-worth. So this is how I regain my self-worth and my dignity. And I believe my time is up. Thank you for listening.
Anyone else here to address counsel, please come forward. You state your name and address.
My name is Trey. I do want to exercise my fourth amendment right. I do not want to give my address. I just want to speak real quick about a a few things. I am a gun rights activist, and I do open carry demonstrations around Cedar Rapids Marion area. I also go out of state where it is legal to do these things. Wisconsin, Texas, and Oklahoma. I've been to all of those places. I started doing this about five and a half years ago. And when I first got out here doing this, open carry demonstration where I will have AR-15, extra magazines, pistol on my side, bulletproof vest, the whole getup. I started doing this to show people that the hero likes that gun too. And protectors see value in that firearm. And we can't be demonized by the things that we choose to use to protect the only life that we do have. And I got out here in Cedar Rapids early 2000, this was like May 2020, I believe. And I was approached by Cedar Rapids Police Department. They told me right away that I did not have to identify myself, but they would appreciate some cooperation because they got some calls and wanted to know who I was. So since they gave me an out upfront by saying that I did not have to identify myself, I identified myself just to play fair, and I was new to the whole thing. So I wanted to defuse any potential of a conflict. And so I gave my idea. Later that same year, late summer, early fall, I did an open carry demonstration here in Marion, Iowa, where I was approached by three officers. I cannot pronounce his name. You spell it D J E R F. Badge number, what was that badge number, 172? And also Officer Chapman, badge number 208, and Officer, I don't know how to pronounce that, H O T S, Hots. And whatever badge number for that officer is, 190. They approached me, requesting identification. And I told them that I didn't have to do that, but if they were going to force me to, I would like to hear the consequences of me refusing verbally to ID. And if the consequences were scary, then I would ID them because I didn't want any trouble. They proceeded to tell me that I would be arrested, taken down to the station, and I will be somehow identified. And once I was identified and cleared, that I will be free to go. So when I heard that, I didn't want any troubles. I didn't want anyone putting their hands on me. So I gave them my ID. Both of these examples that I'm giving you now are on camera. After that, I did an open carry demonstration. This is about a year and a half ago in Dubuque, Iowa. The most popular video on my YouTube channel where I was approached by two officers, asked to ID, and I refused. And they allowed me to verbally refuse when they didn't have anything to accuse me of. And they let me go. So I have these examples of how two different police departments in Iowa granted me the rights without threat that I have to refuse ID. Marion Police Department did not do that. And in the meantime, while they're forcing me to ID myself, what we're dealing with here is my life in their hands, that if I did not back down, that would have gotten bad, but for what reason? Two other police departments on camera told me that I did not have to ID myself. So if this is going to be an issue, I will Marion Police Department constantly fumbling how it is that they handle something like the Second Amendment, which I thought you guys took it over to protect. I will find out if someone is willing to cross that line because I will continue to do these open carry demonstrations everywhere that I go. Just September, just this past year, a drunk guy approached me and my cousin during an open carry demonstration here in Marion. And the police that showed up actually allowed this drunk guy to cause a problem. They asked him to remove himself. They told me and my cousin that we weren't doing anything illegal, that we were free to stay there. The whole time avoiding the fact that this guy was obviously drunk, trained officers should recognize this. I recognized it. They didn't check. I called for a sobriety test or someone to examine this guy to be sure that he wasn't drunk multiple times on camera. Nothing happened. Once again, my life is in the hands of foolish people mishandling how this is supposed to go. The whole time, I'm the only good guy on the scene. They completely let this guy go. He drove away, actually, clearly drunk. And I did not get the names of those officers that did that I was completely engulfed in my YouTube streaming. And I let that one slip away, but Marion Police Department, man, from stories that I've been hearing from my guy and the looks that I've been getting from this guy. As soon as he starts speaking, he looked me in my face like I've done something wrong, and I have nothing to do with what this man has to speak on. But he looked me right in my face, death stare, six, seven seconds along, made me uncomfortable. I don't know what's going on here, but come on, man. You guys took that whole thing. You appear to be serious when you did that. So be serious about it when you're dealing with people because I will be out soliciting hugs from the public while I'm armed to show you guys that good guys like that gun too, okay?
Thank you. Anyone else address counsel? Okay, we'll close this part of the meeting. I would just like to ask for some clarification from the staff. There were a couple, at least a couple of the speakers referred to other entities or law enforcement entities that that were not related to the city of Marion.
Yes, that's correct. The Lynn County Sheriff provides security at the Lynn County Courthouse. It is a county facility. And so we do not actually have any authority over the Lynn County Sheriff's Office. That would be a county matter. The same thing is true. We don't have any authority over any of the judges or magistrates. Kristen Deniger is not a magistrate in this county. She's in Jones County. So we would not have any authority over that either.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, with that, we'll proceed to any council comments.
Mayor?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I apologize. We did receive a comment from a person who wishes to remain anonymous. They wrote about concerns with the public forum rules. The email was sent to you guys in advance of the meeting.
Thank you for that. Okay. With that, we'll go to council comments. Members turn it.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do not have any comments. Thank you.
Mr. Brett?
Super Bowl Sunday. I wish I could say go Packers, but unfortunately, I think I'm going to have to say go Chiefs. I know Seth's not here to to hear me say that, but maybe go Chiefs. I'm not sure yet.
On that theme, I don't haven't decided which team because I've got go Iowa State because we have Brock Purdy for the 49ers. And I know there's Iowa players too, but then we also have our own Marion resident who is a Chiefs cheerleader returning for her second year at the Super Bowl. So she will be there with her. She already has one Super Bowl ring from last year, so we'll see if they put on the second one, but they're all right there. So let's go Super Bowl, but my Vikings aren't there. We might as well just enjoy having our Marion residents who are actually part of the game. And thank you all for all you do.
Yeah, I feel a lot, a lot of things have happened in the past couple of weeks since last time we were here. But the one thing I want to bring up is I had the pleasure to judge the Future Cities competition with our city manager, Ryan Waller, and our deputy city manager, Kim Downs, Saturday a little bit ago at one of the Cedar Rapids Elementary Schools. And those kids were all just fantastic. Super intelligent, all super well-spoken, and I think the age groups were, what, sixth through eighth grade, Kim? And, you know, they were using grant words, very, very big words. And they all just did an amazing job, so. So shout out to the team that gets to go to Washington DC, I think, that won that day. And it was just really fun and such an honor to judge those students' projects. So it was pretty cool.
I'm stunned. No, no big comments that I have for the last couple of weeks, but I do just want to, again, thank Mike for his forbearance when I get a little geeky on something. And it's, I've said this several times before. Ryan, the entire staff is now starting to mind meld with me because they know what the questions are that I'm going to ask, generally speaking. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think the rest of the month, to me, is a very exciting time because we're going to start, especially for our local athletes and our high schools. Because we're going to start first with the state wrestling. Right after that, move into the girls state tournament. And right after that, the boys state tournament. So they're just starting the districts and playoffs for basketball. So to me, the rest of the month is a very exciting time to watch our and support our local athletes.
I thought you were going to say it's exciting because of the upcoming State of the City presentation, but March fifth, everyone's invited to the State of the City presentation. I do want to read an email that I received from a resident. Or I'll read an excerpt from it. On Monday, January fifteenth, while we were on vacation in Texas at approximately six thirty AM, I received a motion alert from a camera in my garage. Neighbors I contacted were out of town. The temperature was fifteen below and our house has water pipes running through the ceiling of the garage. One neighbor suggested contacting the police, which I did, and Officers Green and Wilson responded within five minutes. We're so grateful for the rapid response of your team, their professionalism and helpfulness. They removed a faulty sensor from the garage door and to ensure the door didn't open again, unplugged the garage door opener. So just one example of the helpfulness and customer service that not only our police department, but our entire team provides to residents of Marion, which is one reason why ninety five percent of the respondents in our community survey rated our city as either an excellent or a good place to live. And said ninety five percent said they would recommend it to a friend. It's a big reason why people are happy and satisfied living in Marion, Iowa. And I just want to commend our police department and all the staff for going above and beyond and seeing their role in helping people to have a good quality of life and helping them solve their issues. So, thank you. The other thing I want to, I wasn't here at the last meeting and I'm not, I don't know if it was mentioned, but I want to congratulate the entire team and the entire community on being selected as the Playmaker Magazine Community, Playmaker Magazine Community of the Year. That is a national award. Marion was in competition with large cities and we were selected for our focus on quality of life. And the focus of Marion's leadership on giving people great opportunities. And something we should all be proud of. It's a testament to, again, the collaboration within the team and with our community partners and the entire community, all working towards a goal of making this city a great place to live and do business. And something to be celebrated. So congratulations to everyone. With that, we will adjourn the meeting. See you next time.